Good evening. The special meeting of October 23, 2023 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please. Bradley?
Here.
Jones?
Parks?
Here.
Prohaska?
Here.
Ryan? Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're here tonight to have a review of the district's strategic plan, and we're going to hand it over to Superintendent Hawkins.
Good evening, and welcome to everyone. We have a nice crowd here tonight, which is always exciting to see. So, as you know, the district has a strategic plan that we put out and update every five years. So this is the year that we are going to be updating our plan to move forward for the next five years. But in the meantime, the district puts together priority initiatives, and we share those out three times a year. So we go through those priority initiatives, and then we report out how we're doing as a district. So we, you know, it's the checks and balance, but it's also a great way to inform not only the board, but our community about the different initiatives and things that are going on, the great things that are going on in our district. So we appreciate you all being here for that, for sure. And the goal is really, if you look at, Mike, if you look on our priority initiative sheet, there's a key. And so the goal is, by the end of the school year, that things are either completed, we've made them operational, or they've made significant progress. That's always our goal. And there's sometimes that some of our goals, as we get them started, they end up being canceled because maybe that initiative wasn't what we thought it was going to be originally. So we report out, like I said, three times a year with the goal of trying to get to those top three statuses. So this year, just as a reminder, this is our first of three report outs. So some of our things we're going to talk about really have some progress or steady progress because these are goals that we're working to complete by the whole, by the end of the school year. The other pieces, just as a reminder, that the district is out for a bond referendum. So there's been lots of work done internally, of course, to get that information out to our community and to our voters to hear more about what that entails and the facts about the bond referendum. So, so when we started this, we really wanted to highlight some of our priorities, and nobody really wants to sit here and listen to the superintendent talk at people for an hour. That's just, that's not what we all are here for. So what we started to do was to invite guests into the room, and they can tell us their real-life experience that they are seeing or feeling within the priorities. So tonight, just so the board knows, we do take, we do have someone here to talk through all four of our pillars. However, I've told them all that we're going to put them at the beginning of the show so they can get home to their families and things because it's been a long day already for most of these people. So we just really appreciate you coming and sharing with the board tonight. So our first person up to the microphone is going to be talking about priority initiative number 16, and it's going to be under the pillar of employee excellent. So I welcome Caitlin Wolf, and she is a para at Eisenhower Elementary School. So, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I, this is my first year as a para, so I am completely new to the process, which was really nice to then be asked to speak about the onboarding process. I have been a district parent for six years. I've been a district student since I was a small child. My mom was a teacher for years. So I've been around the district, but to actually be an employee was a whole new ballgame. I attended the onboarding training in October. It was offered in August, but I was hired early August, and then the training was like two weeks later, and we had a family vacation scheduled. I wasn't driving back from northern Wisconsin to attend a training. I wish I had taken the training in August, so I would recommend in the future having more dates available because a lot of the information would have really helped those first couple of weeks. It was very walking in blind. So the training in itself is fantastic, you know? It covered all of the questions that we had. I just wish there had been other dates available, especially in that early August time when so many people are getting hired, you know, down to days before school starts. You can't reach everybody, but it would have been nice to have a few more dates available. The training itself was very informative. We covered so much information in those seven hours. It was crazy how much they packed in, and I felt like that was really good. It's information that everybody needs to hear, so I just, I found it really beneficial. Honestly, it's probably something that could be shortened and kind of like a reset every few years because it's just, it's good core information that people need, you know?
Can you talk a little bit about the onboarding at Eisenhower?
The onboarding process at Eisenhower? I, we, Eisenhower does it a little bit differently. Para's come actually the day before the other schools. So we were there one full day with our classroom teachers and the other paras to kind of get to know each other, try to talk through some of the kiddos, what to anticipate. I am in the Level Two classroom with the autism kiddos, so we've got kiddos in Gen Ed the bulk of their day, and we've got kiddos that are strictly in the autism classroom with us. So it was a good chance to kind of figure out who needed what supports and what to expect from some of the kids. I felt like the entire Eisen, I felt and still do feel like the entire Eisenhower team is very, very supportive of us as paras and really value our insight and our contribution. They're coming to us and saying, from the teachers to the instructional coaches, all the way up to Mr. Ferguson, is coming to us and saying, you know, you're spending more time with these students. What do you think we should do about this problem? How do you think we can resolve this behavior? So I feel like the onboarding process at Eisenhower was pretty top-notch. I've never been through other schools, but I really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Thank you for becoming a para professional. We all value what you do. Do you feel, you, we're only in October. Do you feel like a post, you know, like another short training after you get introduced and actually get in the real world of being a para professional? Do you feel like a follow-up? As time allows, I know that's a lot to ask.
I, yes, but it would need to be more targeted, probably on the school or even classroom base. Some of the kids I'm working with, other paras in other schools would be like, wait, what? What are you doing? So I feel like it would have to be more like almost classroom-based, but yes, you know, if the instructional coach or even the teachers could lead a follow-up training to kind of address some of the bigger issues.
Yeah, to kind of give feedback and then, you know, because I'm sure once you're in the real world, there's things that pop up that you didn't expect or...
Yes, and there's not time from day to day. I mean, I'm with one student from 8:30 to 9:30. At 9:30, my replacement comes, and I go to my next kiddo from 9:30 to 11:30. Like, there is not time to stop and say, hey, Mrs. Jones, this happened, can we chat later? There's not time in the day. I mean, we are from one student to the other with 30 seconds to spare. I have trained my bladder well in the last two months. So, yeah, I feel like that opportunity would be beneficial.
Good.
Currently, we're using the Friday late arrivals, two Fridays a month, we're coming in and having continuing ed and stuff, and we've had one of those Fridays we've used for that very purpose, just to go over each kiddo and talk about strengths and needs and where we need more support, that kind of thing. So Eisenhower is doing that, but I don't know if the other schools are, and it's, it was very helpful, I think, for everyone.
Thank you.
No problem. Caitlin, in addition to the onboard, onboarding time to prepare you for the work, are you having ongoing professional learning experiences along the way?
We have...
Want to get ahead of things here?
You'll have to expand more, but we have, I believe, five trainings on reinforcement throughout the school year. We've had one, we have another one coming up, I think, the first Friday in November, and then April and May, perhaps? There's five total trainings, and those are here at the forum for all paras in the district. And then in addition, like I said, the second and the fourth Fridays of the month, we're having continuing ed at school. And that is, once was led by Mr. Ferguson, another one was led by Molly Powers, our special ed instructional coach, and those are, are more targeted to our specific roles versus the general education the district provides. And then in addition, we've also been QBS trained, which is a 12-hour training that we did mid-September, two nights a week for a couple of weeks there, so that we can, you know, have the tools to safely support our kids. So, yeah, there's been a lot of training. So well-trained.
Well, we really appreciate you joining us tonight. You have five children in our district, correct?
I do. Well, four of the five, the youngest one will be joining us next year.
Very busy, so thanks a lot for being here. Appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Next up to talk about the pillar of effective resource management, we have Kristi Ostrander, who's going to talk a little bit about the development of our virtual learning days and how special education is going to, the work they'll be doing on those virtual days. So thanks again for being here, and she's from Audubon.
You're welcome. I am from Audubon. I am Kristi Ostrander, and I teach children with significant disabilities at Audubon. Excuse the laryngitis, I apologize. And as a member of the leadership team from Audubon, I was asked to help develop those booklets that will be used for our at-home learning days. When we created the booklets, the teacher representatives from every grade level were given fall standards in a theme like sports or weather, and the team of teachers took those standards and themes and created activities that could be used for instruction. The instruction for our elementary kids had to be paper and pencil because not every kid has access to a computer or iPad or internet at home. The teachers kept the standards consistent for all students but differentiated the activities based on the diversity of needs with our students. It was important for all of us to keep all students in mind when we were developing these activities. Some adaptations you can see through the booklet is, some students may be writing out an answer while others are circling an answer. Some students may be asked to come up with a rhyming word versus circling two pictures that rhyme. I do kindergarten, so those were some of my examples. Although the teachers did very thoughtful in differentiating the booklets, it was important to note that the differentiated booklets may not meet all of our students' needs. Through my current role as a significant disabilities teacher for our students, these booklets may need additional accommodations or adapted materials for the kids based on their skills and their needs. The district at-home learning days is an amazing opportunity for our staff, for our students, and for our families so that we don't lose a day of learning and we can still end the school year in a reasonable amount of time. And I know this is the first year we're rolling out this plan, so there's going to be several growing pains and learning opportunities, but I'm excited to see where it goes. But as I begin to think of barriers with my current students, and I wonder how these at-home learning days look like for them and how they can, I can make materials accessible for them based on their physical, visual, or communication needs, the one thing that we can all agree upon is that these students need work based on their IEPs and what is laid out in their continu, contingent, contingency, thank you, learning plan included in their IEP. Again, these booklets were, are differentiated and meet many of our students' needs, but not all of our students. So when I think of my students, we're working on letter identification and sounds, and that's not in the booklet. So with the activities that I do with letter cards or number cards with their number identification, these are all different activities that I can send home with our kids based on my students' needs. We're putting numbers in order. Mom can get, mom can ask the kid, give me the five, which isn't what's in the packet for most kids, but is what my kids will need. And some are simply just matching colors and shapes and pictures and file folder games, and they're all practicing their name. So that will be a simple activity to send home with those, let's write our name again. And I hope we don't need to do too many of these at-home learning days. It's going to be a great opportunity for us to learn all of those successes we have, but also figure out what is those barriers that some of our kids are seeing with these at-home learning days, so.
That's great, yeah. Any questions, Kristi? As you know, we're excited. The virtual days is something new that the district is rolling out this year, and so there will be opportunity for some feedback after the first few days because, as we know, it won't be perfect, but, you know, we'll work hard to make those improvements and, as always, do the best for our kids. So I appreciate you coming and talking about that today.
Thank you. It was great to, it was great to make the packets, and it's great to think about how those kids are going to do these at home, so.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you doing that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trailblazer work.
Someone asked Mike to go two slides because Mr. Glazer said he'll wait, right? So the next one we're going to have come up is about priority initiative number nine, and this is in community engagement. So Ayoko Man is going to come up and have a conversation with us to talk about the development and launch of a parent and family support series designed to provide education and resources to families on a variety of topics impacting youth. And so we had our first engagement session this last week, and so I'm excited that you're here to share with us. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, and it's really good to be here. My name is Ayoko Man. I am from the Marshall Islands, so I came to Dubuque in 2010. After seventh grade, I completed in the Marshall Islands, and then I attended Roosevelt in eighth, my eighth year or eighth grade, and then graduated from senior high school here in Dubuque. And so, you know, as someone that just moved to a whole completely different, like a whole new country, new culture, a lot of cultural shock for me, especially, you know, someone that really didn't speak the language really well, and then I can only imagine like putting myself in the other students' shoes and like really, no, I can relate to what they're going through if they were to go through what I, what I went through when I first came here during those high school years. And so like the Marshall East Career Learning Connection event has been really beneficial, not only for students but parents as well, you know, ensuring that they might think, oh, they're going to school, and so we don't have to worry about anything. But we want to ensure that parents know that there are these things that they can also do their part on, like just such as making sure kids go to school and, but also know how to use the apps that we're using to communicate with teachers and the schools, and how to keep up with their kids' grades and stuff like that. So part of the event was really great because we include the technology part of it because not a lot of parents were aware of the Infinite Campus or Parent Square, and then we were able to help parents sign up for those if they weren't already signed up, but also help them navigate those. So it's been really great, and thank you so much. And that was actually her second time. The first one was April of last year, and then second was, was last week. So it's been really successful.
Thank you. We are so fortunate to have you after graduating from senior high school and then coming back and helping with our students. No better teacher than someone who has been in the trenches, experiencing what these kids are experiencing now, and that's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
She was an excellent translator at the event as well.
Yeah.
We said, guess what? You're translating. Appreciate you doing that.
Your English is very good, too.
It is, and I'm just really grateful to be part of the planning committee meeting for that event. So thank you so much, and thank you to Shirley as well.
Ayoko, we need you to be a teacher.
No.
I totally did the same thing last night, and I say that to you.
Don't stop now.
Yep, now won't we?
Another great thing about the evening was, you know, not only did we have supports for our families, but then we had activities for the students to go to and hear about career pathways. And so lots of our community partners were there to present about education, the health, healthcare. John Deere was there, Carpenter's Union was there. I'm going to forget a bunch of people, but it was, it was a great event. And then students had the opportunity to go in and listen to what they need to take, what they need to do to get into those careers. So it was, it was, it was great. It was a great evening. We got, we had pizza, and we did some dancing at the end, so it was, it was a great evening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, for our visitors, we have Ed Glazer, who's our principal at Audubon Elementary School, and he's going to come and be our presenter on student achievement and development. And he's going to talk about priority initiative number one. It's really about the multi-tiered engagement around attendance and how do we reduce barriers and enhance supports so that students come to school on a regular basis? So, Ed, we're really happy to have you here tonight and anxious to hear the things that you're doing at Audubon.
Thanks for having me. I think a lot of the things that I'll share in initiatives that Audubon is doing, most schools in the district, I think, are trying to tackle this elusive challenge of improving attendance, but I think it goes way beyond that, you know, really trying to get optimal learning environments where every day the best place a child could be when they wake up is coming to school. I know that Audubon's not alone in that endeavor. So I have a few slides. Go ahead, Mike. Some of the tools that we have at our disposal continue to get better. We have a Power BI that connects with Infinite Campus, and principals have that, and our, and Audubon's privileged enough to have a connector. Some of the things that we do with attendance, I do from the principal perspective, but I also have a connector, and it's very much appreciated that some of our schools get that position. And we work closely on trying to, you know, improve, improve attendance. So this is an example of just one of the, I mean, screenshots from our Power BI. We have a Power BI that, that connects to the behavior data, but also this one is about attendance. So I'm able to dissegregate data, and it's really quick and easy to use instead of trying to break down all the data by hand. We're incorporating data-driven dialogues. We've done that for years with academic pieces, math, language arts, writing. Our teachers have, in the last 10 or 15 years, they're accustomed to that. We're incorporating that same system for our behavioral data, but also this year, we're really diving in deeper to try to do some of those same things with our attendance. We're off to a good start, and for me, it helps to have like a scoreboard like this that we're easily able to pull up and, you know, our, do our efforts, are they making a difference? And, you know, every percentage of a student of staying out of that chronic area or improving their attendance, you know, we, we've preached for a long time that every minute matters, and we're hoping that we can keep our trend this year kind of trending in the same direction that we've been in September. Go ahead, Mike. All right, one of those things that, well, to start with, the state looks for, they want all schools to have at least 95% average daily attendance. So that's on our performance profile, and that's been an elusive number for Audubon and in a lot of schools, especially since COVID. You know, there, for a couple of years there, you know, we were telling kids not to come for at least five days if they're symptomatic, or maybe it was 10 at some point. So that may have affected things, but I think also, you know, we have, there's been, it's just been such a disruption in education where we want to make sure, like for generations, it was like, hey, school's not a choice, that's, that's the job. And some of the disruption is, maybe we can get by without not going to school today, you know, and there's all sorts of barriers. So one of the things we wanted to do at Audubon is figure out a way to get those classroom teachers a lot more involved in the process. The research would say it matters most, the adults that the students are most connected with, they're the ones that it matters most when they notice that they're not there, or if they notice they are there, if they notice that we've been able to overcome some barrier. So this is an example of one of the teachers. This is not required, but when they have 95+, she's doing a little chart, and they have some kind of a little fun thing that they do when they achieve that. So that's one example. We've really tried to engage our families. We have an Audubon family organization that some of the ideas for what would kids be excited about if we put an incentive in place? Some of those come from the, that family organization, but this is our student leadership team this year, and a lot of our ideas of anything school, I always say, anything kids are doing fun, they're, it's going to come from this leadership team. So they came up with the idea in November of, we're going to be closing it out early because the weather is, so tomorrow's the last day, and we've got a, I don't know, a three or four grade-level tie for the best attendance. They get to go down tomorrow afternoon to Comiskey, spend 30 minutes, have some fun. We've got a little snack for them. So anyway, part of this attendance initiative is getting different stakeholders involved, and that's an example of that. I try to keep my daily announcements very short, but this year, every day I do a 95% challenge update, and it ties back to either the classroom competition or the school-wide competition. I didn't know if it would have that big of an impact because in the past, we've really focused on like the adults in the equation, and this year, we're really trying to get kids excited about this, and so far, we've seen some good results by, by doing that, more, more than I thought. Family attendance communication, when, that, that's an example of a grade level that they, they want it so they get to put that trophy outside their hallway for a day. We always ask that we take a picture so that, that teachers can send that out on seesaw and celebrate with the families. Last year, I started a little meeting or a club called the Big Five Behavioral. We were having a lot of behavioral challenges, and we started that in January, and it really helped us finish the year on a much better pace. So the, the behavior one is still, we do that monthly, I take the data, and the Big Five stands for, you know, who, what, when, where, why. We're applying that same system to attendance, and I invite voluntarily, you know, teachers who want to come and meet after school, and we try to keep those meetings an hour or less, but it gives me different perspectives because in the past, it's been me and the counselor and our connector, our office staff who are tracking the attendance every day, and then our health office. And we still, that group is still in daily communication, and we also have meetings from time to time, but I'm getting a lot more from, a lot more proactive ideas, or some of the teachers that are on that are like, wow, I never knew that family struggled, and now they're noticing, or they're helping come up maybe with a specific plan for a child that we hope can move, move the dial in the right direction. That was a celebration of our October, and they had the little pizzas up in their windows, so every day they got 95%, they got another pizza topping, and then I think they were the winners of that. And I don't know, the kids, I'm surprised at how excited they are over something so small. At the end of October, or at the end of September, that was September, we, that class got a pizza party, but we invited their families, and it was like a double win for me because any time we can get the families in and showing that this is a really inviting and happy place, it's, it's a win. And it's a family celebration, you know, we're all together, the families, the school, the child, and it's fun to celebrate stuff like that together, and it doesn't take much time to do it, and it seemed to have an impact in September. You can go through that, that's just that silly traveling trophy. But that one kind of goes with this one. We started, traditionally, the students who have struggled the most getting to school are our pre-kindergarten through first graders. So my connector coordinated like a back-to-school, we didn't want to call it an attendance meeting, we called it the Great Start Dessert Party, and we invited some guests in. We had Chelsea Cox from the Dubuque Community School Foundation, Carlos Pittman from Dubuque Schools here, Antonio Mozón from the Multicultural Family Center, and then Angela Schroth, she worked for parents as teachers, but she's also an Audubon parent. And we just did little rotations where they had these little 10-minute presentations on the importance of coming to school and working with the school. the importance of coming to school and working with the school on removing barriers. And then we had some little snacks at the end of the day. It was fabulous. So, anyway, the picture right before, our preschool is one of our best attending classes this year so far. That's the first time we've seen that. And I'm excited about that and I'm hoping that that trend continues. And then we're just trying to blast recognition all the time, whether it's at an assembly. This is a chart that our connector is going to be starting up here this next month. And it's right out in the main hallway where they can see which classes have the most 100% attendances. So, we're just trying to get it out in as many ways as possible. This little guy stopped and was wondering what that was all about. And I said, well, your class is probably going to have to take their picture by that someday soon. This is an example of a specific, like a check-in and check-out for a student. And I think it's, it might be this student, we had one student who's never been off the chronic list, and she's a fifth grader now. She's gone from 26% absenteeism at the end of September and she's down to 10. And we're going to celebrate when she falls, chronic is 10%. So, for her and her family, this could be the first time that she falls off that list. So, things are happening at the individual level too. And that's part, we do this in tier one. Most of it is, like, school-wide is all tier one. And then when we get into specific plans, it goes kind of into tier two, right in line with what we do for academic and behavioral supports, and then tier three sometimes. But we're trying to stay out of like the punitive kind of thing because typically, that's kind of how we've looked at it, or I think families feel judged. And that's the last thing any of us want. We know things are coming up and so. So, if we do have a family struggling, we invite them in for a family attendance cooperation meeting. We've done that in the past. If, sometimes we go and visit homes and see if there's barriers there. And we try to step into conversations, you know, with like, what are your aspirations and goals for your children? And then really kind of make it the urgency, like, what can we do to break down the barriers so that you can, your children can attend regularly? Because things do come up. We have resources. We can, we're here to help is kind of what those conversations are about. And then these are just, I'm constantly putting stuff in our parent newsletters. You can go through the next one. Those are all just little snapshots that go into my newsletters. And some of it's just educational, like, one of them I did on the first week was, people don't realize, two absences a month, you're going to be on the chronic list. And for a student who's struggling, that's really surprising to them and families, I think, in general. So, we're just trying to put good habits in place and really feel like, hey, if they can attend, that's probably the most impactful thing a family can do for their children is get them to school. And we expect to see growth when everything's in place. So. All right.
We all have a competitive nature. I was wondering in the classrooms, because they all want to be the 95+. So, do you find that some of the students will, if they notice one of the, our student or two that usually don't always show up, are they on them like, hey, we want to get 95, so you got to come tomorrow?
You know, I think there is, you know, and that was one thing we worried about. We didn't go this direction for a few years because I was worried about competitive staff being maybe too competitive. And also competitive students who might show their disappointment over, you know, a student that maybe for no reason of their own couldn't get to school. So, we talked about that with our staff and they're doing a really great job of keeping it light.
Keeping it positive, yeah.
Keeping it positive, keeping it light. And I have seen nothing but just pats on the back. And I've seen classrooms, you know, calling on a child who we haven't heard from, are you okay? You know? And that's something, something that's new. And I think some of that means a lot from a student. Maybe they woke up and they weren't feeling well, as well, I hope we can see you later. You know, we'd rather get them for a half-day. And we're starting to see more of that, that kids are at least joining us for partial days. And so, yeah, I've been pleasantly surprised by putting it kind of with students, like getting them involved. We do have a lot of students that they're responsible for getting kids up and going out the door. And I think this has made it kind of fun for them. And knowing like, hey, if you need help, like, call us, or, you know? And I think that's.
Whatever it takes to get them in the door, I think, you're making it fun and they want, they're excited about it, it sounds like.
Yeah. And, you know, the other thing is, my connector is keeping, you know, the Excel file with really the down and dirty data, but we're starting to track like things we wonder about. Like, a couple of Fridays ago, it was like 45 degrees and blustery and rainy when everyone woke up. That was our worst attendance day. We were at 89% ADA that day. And I wondered about that. So, now we're starting to code that in our file of different days where we're below 90. Because I get, I really throw the challenge on the students, you know? If we're at 89 one day, that means we're going to need some hundreds. Having some fun with it, but also gathering more specific data and seeing what we can find for trends. And maybe then on some of those, you know, those days where it's just gloomy and it's hard to get going, maybe that's a day that I send a message out and putting out our average daily attendance or some kind of data that, hey, get here when you can. We need you. We're really, we're really low today. And, you know, that's getting the whole community more in tune with our data and hopefully using it in a positive light where it isn't judgmental and it's not shaming. It's like, let's celebrate. I want to celebrate the growth. And if we can get students at school, I can guarantee growth academically and behaviorally. It all goes together. So, I'm hoping that we can keep our trend going this year.
I think it's great that you're doing that and keeping track of the data and kind of paying attention to what might be some of the variables that are impacting that, but also the work that you're doing to help families and discuss, you know, what are the things that might be making it hard and let's find solutions. So, just bravo with so many awesome initiatives that you're doing that are really creative and fun.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the resources. I mean, all of this, it's tough decisions, you know? Financially, some of them have ramifications, but it does make a difference. And I know I'm not the only principal that really appreciates it. So, thanks for all your work too.
Yeah, you know, Ed, this is under our student achievement and development. And obviously, student achievement is, you know, our highest priority. But the work you're doing, they have to come to school in order for us to do the work. So, I appreciate all the work you're doing to get kids to school and it seems very positive. And, yeah, keep it up.
It's been fun.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed. Great.
Well, I appreciate all our visitors coming tonight. That's way more fun than listening to me. But we'll stay in the student achievement and development. So, as you can see on the screen, there's a list of what the priority initiative is for the year. And then like we talked about before, it has a status update of what that means. And so, number two, we'll start with that one, and that is making steady progress. And that's about the MTSS system or the multi-tiered system of support. And really talking about what we're doing through professional development and how we're strengthening our practices within our classrooms to close those learning gaps. And so, some of the talking points for that for us tonight is really during our PD sessions, we've been focusing on the MTSS system and then that optimal learning environment and making sure that teachers understand what that looks like in their classroom, with their grade level, and how they can use their lessons to make sure that we're offering that to each and every student. The other thing at the elementary level is this year, they're really focusing on the deconstruction of the essential standards. And doing so, they're really hoping to see that strengthening of instruction. Another thing that we've done in this area is, as you know, in the elementary, for our social-emotional health, we use Second Step. And then in our middle schools, we use Seven Mindsets. And if you remember earlier this year, Mimi Holzinger came and talked to us about in the high schools, they've added Character Strong. And so, those are all things that students are getting, sometimes on a daily basis, depending on your age, sometimes weekly. And then at the high school, it's more, it's every other week, I believe. So, really trying to really hit the social-emotional piece of the student as well. And number three, we're looking to expand career pathways that are offered through our Vertex Initiative and enhance the promotion of pathway plans to high school students and families. We've done a really good job of getting this off the ground and running. And we're really trying this year to make sure that each and every one of our high school students understands what that means and then how can they plan accordingly so that they're ready after graduation of, you know, conquering that pathway that they've chosen. And also looking at ways that if I choose a pathway and maybe I don't like it very much, how do I go and use those resources so I can try other things? Because as we know, when you're in high school, that's a great time for us to try new things. Last year, we had six pathways available. And this year, we have 13 that are available to our students. So, each year, we hope to grow those pathways and really find things that students are interested in pursuing. This year, like we talked about with the Marshallese Night, we've been trying to promote the career clusters and really having kids do the career exploration so they can try things. You know, one of the things that, at the Marshallese Night, they, Mercy was there. And they were letting students use syringes, you know, and doing some things around blood pumping and blood pressure and things. And kids walked out there and like, that would be so cool to be able to do that without probably having that prior knowledge of that experience. So, we're really trying to get, offer things for our kids, our students and families to attend so they can see what's out there as far as career paths go. Number four, this has really had some progress. And it's really a plan to develop a ninth-grade seminar course, which will be based on best practices designed to support students' transition from the eighth to ninth grade. Because what we are noticing is, we were having some students not passing all their coursework in ninth grade. And as we know, to meet their graduation requirements, it's really important that you're passing all your classes and not getting behind. So, we've talked about, we've decided that we're going to create a class that's really going to talk to students about, how do you study? You know, what classes should you be taking? What pathways are available to you? And really just help with that transitioning into high school. So, we're excited about that. And though we'll be sharing more information about that at the Ed Programs meeting in November as well. So, we're very excited about that piece. Number five is to talk about research-based professional development to enhance teacher effectiveness through recreating and reinforcing the optimal learning environment. Again, that idea of making students feel like they belong, that's been a key piece because we know that when students feel like they belong, I mean, Ed just shared that with us right now, right? When they have a relationship and they're involved in their own education, then they want to come to school. So, during that time, we had like 90 breakout sessions. So, our staff was able to pick what they wanted to attend and what they wanted to learn more about as far as how they can meet kids where they're at and get them in that optimal learning environment. We also had the Outdoor Adventure Initiative, which was used with our elementary students to further engage our elementary teachers in using the optimal learning environment. And then our district mentoring team, as you know, we have seven full-time district mentors, one lead mentor. And they're really assigned to our new staff. And they get mentoring their first two years as a teacher in our district, which is awesome. It's unbelievable. They see them on a weekly basis. And so, really, that group really tied the optimal learning environment into their professional orientation. And then they're also tying that into their professional development that they do with those new teachers throughout the year. So, really trying to make sure we're getting our new teachers caught up with what our experienced teachers might already have. Number six is increase student connections through the addition of extracurricular activities and with an emphasis on esports. I have to thank Colby Culberson for this one because Colby has actually got on the board for the Dubuque Esports League. So, we appreciate your attendance in that and being active with that group. And really, we're just trying to look at synergies and what already exists and how can we support each other? Because a lot of our students are maybe in some of those esport leagues. And so, how do we bring that into our schools? And then how do we expand that? Because we probably have a lot more students that we're not reaching currently. So, that's an exciting partnership that we're looking to expand upon.
Did we, excuse me, did we add dance team in this also this year?
We did, yep. Dance was added this fall. And if you were, I mean, at some of our football games, the dance teams performed either at the end of the quarter or at halftime. So, we've had great turnout with our dance teams. And I believe they were doing them at volleyball games and they plan to do basketball as well. So, we've had lots of students engaged in the dance programs as well. So, that was definitely a good move on our part. Yeah. Number seven is to review and enhance behavioral programming and supports to ensure a continued safe learning environment for all of our students and staff. And then really make sure we're aligning with the new Iowa law around those behavioral supports. So, our administrative teams have really worked to make sure they're updated with the new law. And then we're sharing that with not only our teacher staff, but our paraprofessional and our support staff as well. All of our special education teachers attended a Behavioral Foundation training that was done this fall. Huh? In August? Yep, correct. And then really, we're working on policies that we're going to bring forth to our Ed Programs Committee that are currently under review to make sure that we're meeting that new Iowa law that went into play in July 1. And then lastly, in the student achievement and development area, is to develop a plan to enhance transition services for students eligible for special education to meet their post-secondary expectations in the area of living, learning, and working. And so, I don't know, Brenda, do you want to come up and talk about that for a little bit? That'd be great.
So, as part of the state process for IDEA-ADA, so it's Individual with Disabilities Education Act Differentiated Accountability. So, it's a system looking at special education specific to each district. We received a Level 2 designation. So, what that means is that we'll be having a date coming up next month where we'll dive into our transition data. So, I haven't even seen it yet. We'll dive into that data. We're establishing a team, a diverse team coming together to look from the general education perspective, from the special education perspective with all of our different programming that we offer. And we'll be digging into the work of enhancing support to kids and transitioning to life past school. So, I'm excited that the state actually gave us the option of choosing from a couple of different things. And we're really feeling like transition is where we really need to put some focus, especially looking at graduation rates and looking at what we're seeing from our kids and what we're hearing from our families. So, excited to dig in that work coming up very soon.
Thanks, Brenda.
You bet.
So, next, we'll move on to our second pillar, which is community engagement. And Ioko shared a little bit about the Marshallese Night that we had this last week. But just to put on your radar, on November 2nd, our next district-wide family support series is on suicide prevention. And that'll be at Roosevelt Middle School. And we'll have a keynote speaker and a panel of area experts that will be able to share with parents and then answer any questions and things like that as well. So, we're excited about that next event that Shirley is planning. So, Shirley, I appreciate your work on that for sure. Thank you. The next one, number 11, is to create, oh, I'm sorry, we're on number 10. I skipped by it. Number 10 is to expand efforts to engage broadly across the community with community partnerships and enhance communication tools. And so, one of the things that the district has done is put together a data sharing agreement. And we've done that collectively with our community partners. And really, it's a way that we can appropriately and efficiently exchange information amongst our community partners and the district. And so, that's kind of been something that's been hanging out there for a little while. And so, I'm happy that our team has put that together and happy to see how that helps us, obviously, moving forward. Another piece of this to help improve the communication is we're testing Another piece of this to help improve the communication is we're testing another aspect of Parent Square. And so this will help for our staff to actually give direct messaging to families. Because currently, most, a lot of our staff, we don't supply their cell phones. So for us to ask them, because a lot of our families like to text back and forth. And so this will give us a feature that they'll be able to communicate back and forth with families without using their own personal cellphone or Google Talk or, I don't know all the things that are out there. But it'll just be another resource that our teachers and our staff will be able to use with families. And so we're excited about that. Number 11 is create a central registration process to reduce barriers and registration for families. And as you know, right now, we have families, as they register for school, they go directly to the school. So if I was Caitlin and coming in with five kiddos and they didn't all go to the same school, then I have to go to multiple schools to go through the registration process. And so we have posted, we're accepting applications currently for an enrollment specialist position that will work to enroll all of our families into school. So we're excited about that and the consistency of that. And then they'll also be able to help us develop what that central registration process looks like. Our team here at the forum has reached out to our UEN counterparts, which many of them already have this position. And so they've been getting great ideas to how it works in their district. And so I'm excited to see that move forward. And we hope to have that in place and start for kindergarten registration. Right, Mike? So that's exciting.
A full-time position?
It'll be a full-time position, yes. And then the last one under community engagement is continue to enhance our school business partnerships in the post-COVID landscape. And so the schools have really worked hard to strengthen those relationships that they have with their own community partners. And so we're appreciative of that. And many of our schools, I know Megan Ellsinger, you know, she had her carnival a few weeks ago. And her business partners that came forth and provided for those families was tremendous, you know, as far as food and games and prizes and things like that. So really, we are looking at, how do we take and get all those community partners that we have engaged in schools individually? And how do we make that centralized, you know, through the district? And the nice thing about those community partnerships is we've been able to tap on some of their shoulders to talk about the bond referendum. Because again, the bond has been our huge focus here in November, or I mean, the part of the beginning of the school year. So once we get through the bond, then it'll be our focus to really get an overall process to make sure that we have community partners in each and every one of our buildings. Because that's important for our kids.
I'm glad to hear that. We certainly have had that years past. But I know we've sort of, life has intervened and we've drifted away from that in some ways. I'm glad to hear that every school will have active business partnerships. That's great.
Yeah, I'm excited about that, too. And it's been fun as we've been going around and talking about the bond referendum to different groups and people saying, how can I get involved in the school? So hopefully, we've tapped on some relationships that we can add more businesses to those lists, for sure. Yeah.
So when you say that the central office will have a role to play in that, what are you envisioning in terms of being the school's work and the district's work?
Yeah, go ahead, if you want to talk about it.
I would say, Nancy, that a lot of that is how do we provide support? How do we provide information about best practices? How do we streamline what we see?
Be involved in multiple schools? How can we make sure that we're having a system in place that just at least helps us talk to each other so that we're not maybe going to an organization multiple times, but instead looking at that big picture of their involvement? And also giving some tools to let businesses say, how would you like to be involved? And then how in turn can we as schools be involved in your business? What are the things that we can do? Whether that's, you know, student artwork being displayed in an office or musical performances? Are there a number of ways that we, you know, we see that partnership as a two-way street? And so how can we really look at that and really help the schools maintain those personal relationships? Because that's often where it starts, right, is with the school community. But then how can we just help from the district level to help provide some backend support to say, what best practices? Or if you need something reviewed or some advice on how to best approach something, that we can help do that at the district level as well?
That's great, thank you. Supporting role.
So if we go to our third pillar, which is effective resource management. If we look at number 13, this has really made significant progress. This is about the facility enhancements and the opening of our new preschool center, which is on Chauvinelle Road, the old Medline Building, which we're working on. A branding of that, so we don't refer to it as the old Medline Building anymore as well. But we're really excited about the opening of that in 2024 and the fall of that. And so as we know, as we talked about last month, the bids are going out for that project, for our preschool center. And then we're working internally. We've kept those preschool meetings on our calendar that we meet every other week to really start talking about program itself, the systems, how we register, how we find out how many students are interested, what does the wraparound care look like? How do we tie that together? So really, we have work to do internally to make sure that that system's in place. And so we're ready for that registration when it takes place here, right after the first of the year. So exciting. Number 14 is really another one that's had significant progress. And that's really been out about the bond referendum. Really can't say enough thank yous to our team here at the district office, our principals, our staff. Everybody has really been engaged in this process and have been helping us to make sure that we deliver the facts out to our community. I really have to say a big thank you to Mike and his communication team. I don't know if people got the flyer that was, that came. But all the communication with the website, the emails, the FAQs, I mean, they are like promptly responding to questions that our community has. And so it's been a big lift. And I just want to personally say thanks because you've been doing a great job. Your team's been really helpful. And then, as always, I need to compliment the finance team. Because, you know, with any bond referendum, what's the most confusing part? School finance, right? So school finance is probably the most confusing part. We're really trying to get out there, answer questions, and really, you know, let people understand how this, what this really looks like and how this is going to affect the district and the taxpayer moving forward. So Kevin, did you have anything that you wanted to add with that?
Yeah, I think just a brief recap of why we're at where we're at. You know, for years, we've been talking about the operating efficiencies and the decline in what we predicting seeing the future. Esser was kind of a savior for a little bit, period, and that we've spent those dollars and that's over. So that's why we started the planning a couple of years ago, looking at how are we going to manage that decline in our unspent balance? How are we going to manage those operating efficiencies? And one of the things that came to the forefront, obviously, was the consolidation of the middle school. It's creating an opportunity for us to save about $3.5 million. And if you remember, at the October Facility Support Meeting, you saw our decline in unspent balance for this fiscal year is right around that number. It was about 3.6. So history is starting to show that we need to move forward with those plans. And it's bearing fact by showing how much the decline is. So we started that, looking at that. You know, and it's not only the operating efficiencies that we're going to gain with here, there was instructional benefits, too. If you remember, the equity in the classroom, the instructional spaces. So there's many reasons why the $3.5 million, it was working with our partners, our financial advisors. We saw that funding was able to do this project and keep the levy rate the same. So as you know, there's three different pieces of the levy rate and it adds up to $14.51 per 1,000 of taxable value. Well, we were able to use two of those rates and decrease them and add that fourth new one, the debt service one, and not change the total levy rate. And we're able to do that moving forward because we're not using all of our saved money. We're going to use some of that saved money to help protect or control that levy rate. So it's kind of a unique situation that not all districts are in because some of them have spent all of their saved money. So they're not able to have that flexibility. So it really is a unique opportunity for us to do this at this time. And then there was also the additional funding that we could generate and not change the rate to do those other projects that you've had on the board list for many, many years, the air conditioning, Eisenhower gym, the athletic fields. So it really is a great opportunity for us to move forward, update our facilities, and not put an additional tax burden on our taxpayers.
Kind of piggybacking off of that, the flyer that we sent out was excellent, excellent job. Mike, I know you had a lot involved in that. And I know you've been out to several meetings in the community, several civic groups explaining the situation. Have you been getting a lot of questions about what if the bond doesn't pass? The consequences? Has that been brought up at some of the meetings?
It has. It has been brought up. And I think, you know, the thing that we keep reminding people is, the reason that this whole process started was because the district was trying to find efficiencies to how we can save $3.5 million. And so when we went into, well, we could go from three to two middle schools and that would be a way for us to save the $3.5 million in our operating costs. And as we had that community task force that went and looked at, we looked at locations, we looked at, I mean, we looked at funds. We, I mean, we spent a big chunk of all last year with community groups. We had user groups, we had teachers, parents, students, community leaders all come in and come together and have these conversations. And what we found out from those conversations was, number one, there's not 30 acres of land in the middle of Dubuque, correct? And so the task force really decided that the spot for that middle school was at Washington. And then when we started to look at, what does the funding look like? We found out that the district didn't have enough saved dollars to build that middle school, which then led us to, well, then maybe we look at going into a general obligation bond and see how that works. And that's where we got to today. But the reality is, we still have to find a way to cut the $3.5 million.
And I think another port part of that is, even though we may have funds in other funds, like the SAVE example, we're not allowed by law to transfer those to the general fund to help that. Each of those funds have their own resources and their own uses. And generally speaking, we're not allowed to transfer balances from one to the other to help cover. So the $3.5 million that we're declining, we're not able to take saved dollars and just transfer it over to the general fund to bring that back to a zero or break-even situation. It's just not legally allowable.
I'd like to really publicly thank Elizabeth Kelsey, whom I know is here tonight, the education writer for the Telegraph Herald. I thought yesterday's article, Elizabeth brought such clarity to some of the things that are just naturally muddy by the fact that school finance is different from life finance. And thank you for affording that opportunity. And to the others at the Telegraph Herald, I thought the article really provided a means for some understanding that isn't just commonplace knowledge about that. So just a public thank you to you.
And thank you to everyone. I mean, this is the talk of the town. And if someone has not heard about it, their heads must be somewhere. If this does not pass, we need 60% votes. It's not because we didn't educate people and we didn't shout it out and we didn't have enough involvement. So thank you to everyone for all your efforts.
Thanks, Lisa.
We have another week and a half to go.
So, you know, we've been doing community sessions, like in person. And so just a reminder that tomorrow, we are doing a virtual session over the lunch hour from noon to 1:00. And so you can sign up on our website if you want to be a participant in that webinar. So we look forward to seeing more community members attending that virtual session tomorrow at noon.
And that session, if I remember reading correctly, is going to be recorded and will be available for viewing online.
Correct.
Correct, yes. Yep, so if you can't be there at noon, it will be recorded.
Right. And so the link to that will be on our website, is that correct?
That's correct.
It will be on the bond.
The bond webpage.
The bond webpage, okay.
Go ahead, Andy.
Well, first of all, I do think of what other board members, that there's a lot of people to thank for all of their hard work to get information out, to educate our residents on the importance of this bond, including the YES Committee. You know, the great Tom Barton always during meetings said, okay, what are the three to four things you want people to really to take away about this bond so that there's no confusion? Like, what would be the three to four things we want people to know besides get out and vote?
Well, I think the first thing we'd want people to know is that the tax levy rate's going to stay the same, you know? Number two, I think it's important for people to understand that the district with low SSA and our defined enrollment, it's really important that we find efficiencies to save that $3.5 million a year so that we can continue to offer the same programming and experience for our kids that we do currently.
And the SSA is...
I'm sorry, the state supplemental aid.
Right.
Yep, the money that we receive at the state. Thanks, Nancy, for that. I appreciate it. And then lastly, Kevin, what's the last thing you'd want people to know?
I think that by not using the saved dollars, we're able to save that and use it for the flexibility of maintaining that levy rate. That's important. If we were to tie them up and use that for part of the construction piece, we would lose that flexibility and so we would lose that control on the levy rate.
And that's how we expect to keep the levy rate from increasing.
Exactly.
And I would add just that all of this is so important for our kids. Like, we're talking about optimizing learning space, we're talking about air conditioning buildings. And, you know, all of those things ultimately are going to do so many great things for kids. And that's a big, important reason to do it.
Absolutely. I was going to say, you know, for our updated spaces, I mean, we have two middle schools that are 100 years old. And so the education that we expect them to receive is sometimes not possible in those buildings because they were built 100 years ago. But I think it's also important to know that our goal isn't to build the Taj Mahal of middle schools, you know? I mean, if you look at Roosevelt, Roosevelt's a really nice school. It has great spaces, is climate-controlled. I mean, students are, you know, those instructional spaces are wonderful. And this new middle school would mirror that.
And I think also the Get Out the Vote campaign is very significant, very important for our parents, of our students, also our employees. These are very, very important components in voter turnout. So I'm glad to see that that's going to be emphasized.
Yep, well, thank you. So the vote is on November 7. So if you can see on that priority initiative, we will be completed on November 7, so.
Early voting is open right now.
We have that open. Satellite voting place, early voting is right now, too.
Correct. And lastly, we'll move into our final pillar, which is employee excellence. And so Caitlin talked a little bit already about our new employee onboarding process, especially for our paraprofessionals, which I again want to thank Brenda and her team for putting in the time and helping put that together because it's been very beneficial. We've heard that across the district, so thank you. On number 17, this again is having steady progress, but continue to strengthen and enhance employee recruitment and retention efforts. Because we really want to be the employer of choice within the Dubuque County. And so we are continuing to go into job fairs, recruitment events. You know, we've got the mobile bus that's going out and still recruiting staff as needed. And then really, working on new marketing and promotional materials. So those are things that we're trying to get out. So when we go to those career fairs, we stand out at those as well. And then the last one is explore enhancement of district-supported staff wellness initiatives. And this has had some progress. Things that we're looking at is this counseling team, thanks to Shirley and her team, they offered a session on staff wellness at that secondary symposium at the beginning of the school year to give them some ideas and some supports as they moved into the upcoming school year. We've also are planning to do a Lumen recharge. If you remember, Lumen was our self-care, the professional development we did, personal empowerment PD that we've done and we continue to do with new groups and new employment, new employees. But we are going to do a recharge of that on November 22, which is that day before the Thanksgiving break. And that will be in partnership with the Teacher Quality Committee. So they will be paying for staff to come in and be part of that Lumen recharge for three hours, three additional hours of work. So we're excited for the staff to do that. And then I also know that Brian is putting together a team of employees here in the district to talk about what other staff wellness options can we put together and that we can offer to staff even using our own district facilities. offer to staff even using our own district facilities. So really excited about that. But all in all, you can tell that our team is very busy. You'll notice that some of our executive team, Mark Burns, Lisa DeBachhorse, Julie Lang, Mimi Holzinger, they are at a conference today and tomorrow. So they unfortunately missed tonight. But I, as always, I really appreciate and am proud of the team that we have here at the district office, our district leadership team that leads our district in each and every of our buildings, and then our staff that really come every day to support our kids. And that's what's most important. And so I thank everybody for all your work on these priority initiatives. And I look forward to reporting back to you all in February and to see where our progress takes us. So thanks so much for listening tonight.
Thank you.
I could just say something here. This is going to be, this is going to be my last strategic plan update. And I thank you for, and everybody on your staff for conducting a good reflection upon where we are as a district and where we're going. And things like this are very important, that we have a plan, we've got a game plan, so to speak. And I appreciate all your work. Obviously, these things have to keep on going. Strategic plan has to keep, has to be the basis of our district. And best wishes for the future years to all.
I appreciate that, Jim. And I expect you're going to be sitting right in that first chair, you know, when we come to February, because I think you want to come back and join us.
We're not saying goodbye to you yet, Jim.
Yeah. Readings left. Yeah. On the table. And we do enjoy you bringing in the staff to explain and talk about in the trenches with these topics. That helps us give a visual.
Thanks. We're off to a good start.
Yeah. Amy, can you remind us where we are in the grand scheme of the new strategic planning big picture, if you will?
So the big picture, it was supposed to sunset last year.
Right.
And so we decided as a board and with, under my leadership, that there was a couple things that were happening, especially me being a first-year superintendent. And we decided that we would look at putting in a new strategic plan or an updated strategic plan once we got our new board elected after December. So as you remember, in December, we'll have a board meeting where new board members will be present and old board members. And so we'll make the changing of the guard, so to speak. And then in January, we plan to do a retreat so that we can work with the board to see what are our priority initiatives moving forward? What kind of things are we looking out for the next five years? And then work with our communications team to plan through that and to see what our next, where our next five years could take us and the great things that we can continue to do for our kids.
That's great. Thank you. So that's in January.
That'll be in January, yep.
Perfect.
As you know, everyone knows, we have four board seats available or open. And so once we get our new board on board, it'll be a great process for us to go through as a new group.
Great. Does anybody know when the League of Women Voters School Board Candidates Forum is? I have it in my calendar, but...
This Wednesday.
It is Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yep, at 6:30.
6:30. We might know. We know.
Yeah, you know.
And it's here.
Wednesday at 6:30.
Okay, and that'll be viewable on...
It will be, it will be livestreamed on our website. It'll be available. We will post links to our social media channels as well as to our website. So those who wish to watch can access it there.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate the work of the League to really help our candidates put themselves out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. Any other items? Just a reminder about that virtual bond info session tomorrow at noon and to get out and vote. Seeing nothing else, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.